Inside, right? A lot of times.
That's horrible.
Well, some of them sucks too. Who's gonna... If nobody challenges that, I guess these two neighbors get along and whatever. But if somebody challenges that.
It doesn't matter.
It's the neighbors both agree on it, but it's encroaching on the right.
So in turn the right gets to say it.
It shouldn't be from there.
Well, I mean, that's part of the... I mean, if you're gonna get down to the nuts and bolts, why anybody is even working on this? It's because we agree that there's fences all over the county that there aren't a fight about that are inside the right wing.
So.
I mean, that's... I mean, right. I mean, so that's where, I mean...
They tend to go to tell Frank Worley, he can line up with somebody else. Spence said it was wrong. That was not the right thing to do.
No, it wasn't. And that's why, I mean, nobody's saying that was the right thing to do. It's obviously wrong now. But like I said, Leo Meyer Spence is also encroaching. So I believe the letter should get sent to him and he's got 20 days to move it then. I mean, we know what's encroaching. I mean, and I mean, that's the fight that it's gonna start. And that's the reason why I think anybody even tried to participate in the area is supposed to try and make peace. And that was the wrong thing to do. The right thing to do is follow law. So now we need this county needs to follow law.
There's a lot of fences, guys. Where land that is fenced, it's fenced for one reason. Nature carved glaciers carved this topography.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why it's fenced. It's grazed.
Yeah.
It's not roped to farm. If it's farmed, it's got fences. You go around that draw. You don't go across it because you can't get to with equipment. But the cattle can walk and graze it. So you and I, Frank and Pete and Leo, we got harmony. And we fence around City of Grace, three acres. That's mine. Big deal.
Nobody's gonna complain.
No big deal. But people complain.
But once someone, one of them does. That's when you gotta say, okay, now, now we got a problem.
I mean, if man is gonna fight amongst men. There's no... Yeah, it's...
Well, as I said, fence lines, fence lines are the two things to fight about. So, I mean...
Well, anyway, that's all I got, I guess.
Okay.
I hope I didn't offend anybody I didn't want to kind of feel about.
Welcome to speak your mind, Alan.
Welcome. You know how I feel when I have an issue.
I do. Respect it. I'm not trying to criticize you, but I just, it's, it's, it's an ugly mess that has been sorted out. And if you haven't learned from it by now, then, then you're gonna have to learn a hard lesson again. I've learned many lessons from that issue and I'd be repeating a lot of them, so... And with that, the agenda items are concluded. The only thing left to be would be the miscellaneous. So one of them is the annual management development for Langley Bay.
Send in management plan to them every year for the maintenance. For the department to the board.
So that would be like Sam Rentschler's site maintenance, uh... Then general supplies, uh, electricity for the security line. Garbage collection. Pretty much looks like the same agreement we agreed to every year.
It's just a one-year agreement then?
I believe so. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the agreement with the Department of the Army, Army Corps of Engineers on the Langley Bays.
That's right.
Langley Bay. Second by Commissioner Materia. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Agreement approved. Next is building permit for Gerald Hartman to build a residence off-site and deliver to Hummel's Haven, Section 4, Township 129, Reg 75. I must be, it's Hummel's Haven.
So what about?
That's the south side of Red Slade, I presume.
Nothing about that permit, but did he get a permit before?
No, he... Yeah, he's got this lab there and a crop-based foundation started, which was done probably in summer.
That's what the flower place came, right?
No, he's right next to those two big house. Do this one.
Who's on the flower place, is that labor?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
He started, he just ran it up.
Why haven't there tractors like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I was the one next to her. Those building. But yeah, he, he paid a $300... The, or that's, or the application fee, um... So I guess.
So he didn't know that was supposed to be in before he did?
I didn't talk to him about that, I don't know. But...
Hey, I'll make a motion to approve that, too.
Yeah. Setbacks are good on that, so...
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the building permit for Gerald Hartman. Is there a second to that motion?
Is Hazy still moving that old house in here? That was quiet.
I haven't heard anything talking about it.
Is there a second to the motion by Commissioner Everly for approval?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Materia. Is there any more discussion? I will be abstaining due to a conflict of interest. Or any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Permit is approved. Next item is a mutual aid agreement between Morton County and Emmens County for emergency assistance. What is that again, Marles? We just agree the thing, which was need help or something like that? But is that more like the Sheriff's Department or something like that, or?
I think a lot of this all came about with Jaffa and stuff.
Right. We've done this before, I think, this kind of area.
And I did have Mary, you can send it to Mary Sanger to do that. And she, you guys, she said you did it after.
So yeah, just a physical letter, uh... Mutual aid agreement with Burley, Emmens, Grant, Mert, here, Oliver, through and start. So it's more in county, including the surrounding counties.
Randy Wyble, which is a real house.
And I think if something, whatever happened, we had.
Right. Sure.
It's a red infight. You can find my copy because that's her.
I entertain a motion to approve table or deny the mutual aid agreement between Morton County and Emmens County for emergency assistance. Commissioner Horn makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Agreement approved. Application for a maintenance or refund of tax for particle 52-0012-00717-0501 for tax year 2023.
Where's that?
The name?
This is an abatement. This is an abatement. And this is an abatement. So there's three of them here.
They're all because of the homestead. They qualify for homestead credit.
Can we make a motion to approve all three?
I would entertain a motion to approve all three.
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
Commissioner Horn makes a motion to approve all three abatements for homestead tax credit for year 2023. Is there a second to that motion?
Welcome.
Second by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on the abatements? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Opposed. Abatements approved. Next is a building permit for your home improvement company to remodel, to remodel the main floor bath of a residence in northwest corner of Section 30, Township 129, Reg 74. I entertain a motion to approve table or deny.
It's Harry and Joyce Piper.
Yeah, Harry and Joyce. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Everly to approve the building permit for remodel. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Commissioner Materia. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Building permit approved. Last one is a building permit for a jail letter construction for Randy Wyble who erect a seven floor by 76 residence with a 36 by 45 garage attached on the northwest corner of Section 30, Township 135, Reg 74. Looks like it's plenty out for a little acknowledge.
So all the joy and rest. Yeah. Yeah, it's fine.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Materia makes a motion to accept building permit for jail letter construction on behalf of Randy Wyble. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Permit approved. And at the end of the agenda items, the only thing left to do is to approve bills.
People are reading that today, though. I'm beginning, it's only read that today before.
I'm, I'm, I just.
So what would be a good way to keep it running, hold on that other job? That would kinda help for my month.
I've been giving that, giving to me all of my money, but why would you?
Are you doing that place to work? Something to show them up to.
Thank you. When's the over? Are you going to get something that I'm like, gosh, I'd like to take?
Share that?
I think that's it.
That's wonderful, huh?
Here, buddy.
All right. Beginning of the year, so if it's still for you, you might find out. Person mine, you're gonna pull one by one.
And all that on the state trust. I'm listening.
Well, Neil and Gary. Karen, do you know, just solicit their, they say this plot out there, right? They were buying little workshops, so, you know, we're there then starting stuff. I can't over pitch there.
Where they buy?
That, I didn't mean, so I didn't hear anything.
Circle's profit.
Sanders moved in, essentially.
Like what's trade route?
Yeah. I don't know, world pick on all of that.
Consuming drug, just that, what are they gonna start on? All of the other tool or some kind of budget part of?
What?
Uh, storage containers are pretty handy. Yeah.
I'm just shocked.
I think that would affect your sun. You can do the bathrooms down there and out.
Even the little shit, seven or 15 bucks is pretty cheap. Or even the, even like 10 by 10 ones or whatever. Obviously, sure.
I don't know.
Well, yeah, I was, it's two nights. So I was gonna say super, but it's, it's, it's five, six times.
So Erin, do you want me to come here and say, see if she can come to the next meeting? Or under us?
Yeah.
I think it'd be good. It's just a good idea, right? Should have been more.
You could, you could.
What are your girls doing today?
Um, one of them works for a chiropractor. One of them works for a... Place where they do massages and facial stuff. And the other one goes back on the internet where she has lined up some stuff for the... Stay there is one of the jewelry folks, please, son.
Do you like it, do you like it down in the sun, too?
I don't know. Take the point once in a while. I can never leave on a, but the bomb instead of 15 degrees.
To drive.
Huh?
To drive. That's just that.
It's dry.
Don't wait till it's warm.
I'll drive it, I'll drive it off.
You'll drive it off, that'll...
You made the bar there, you're screwed. County ended up down there, you're screwed.
Well, when it was, what, 70 below wind chill, I think everybody's battery got tested there.
I had to buy a tree.
I had to buy a brand new one and then I parked my vehicle in my shop for about three weeks and went dead. Instead of drained somewhere or something. My old chutabu, I guess, they say the security system worked. So like, for like, three weeks without running, I parked it in, I haven't driven it, I came to the back, it was dead, so...
It's trickle charge.
I had to boost it just to come into town, yeah. And I put a trickle charge on it, I'm not driving the gas.
Battery could get pretty bad in front of the backseat.
Yeah.
You just gotta, drive in, it's so cold out, you just get in there, put your seatbelt on.
Yeah, no. Battery, battery from my plumbing bands underneath the driver's. Yeah, you gotta, you gotta like move it all the way ahead and like take two bolts out and like move it, everybody can put a battery on it.
Well, that's gonna be a part.
No, it's, it's horrible. I didn't look at it, the guys were working on it that one day because they said that, they said that one day we were, we were parked out in front of somebody's house doing some plumbing and just parked it for like six hours during the cold stretch. And he goes, man, we started it, it kinda started slow. And I go, you better check the battery. And then we went ahead and we popped the hood because we just bought the van and the vendor. And I'm like, there's a battery. And like, we started looking around, he was on the driver's seat. I had a, when the I-bone go like that, when the battery was under the backseat, you had to pull back. The bottom deal, love to change the battery, I was.
The wiring's going in, the plumbing's going in. I remember the stadium, I was driving on.
Yeah. Pretty big, it's nice.
Yeah, but we've done it, it's full of shit. Now it's in my home.
So you don't know, you don't, you don't, you don't want it down there? Who, who thought it was gonna be on?
We've done, but it's not, it's not, we don't get the pressure to move.
Deborah started down on the exit.
Where what?
The exit.
It's an interesting word when you get involved with a lot of stuff. It's a champion.
We go down March.
Oh, okay.
Last month's bills, like we hit it, that $13,000 for glass. What was that all?
There was, uh... If you looked at that, there was like three or four different maintainers that...
That had busted the glass.
That did, almost like a cracked windshield or like side window or something. There was like, it's cracked south, but it was still, is it awesome?
Go by glass for windshield on.
I think that one, that one piece of glass was like four or 5,000 bucks or something. Yeah, it was.
That's that babble glass.
Yeah.
Or that paper glass.
Well, did you, this summer when that...
Well, do you have, is there insurance? No insurance on that one with Martin?
I'm not sure how that, with the glass on the maintainers or whatever, how that built.
There's no one to do insurance on that.
On that? It's what you count.
It'll be a complaint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't be like.
A complaint.
Do we probably have to pay for it and then turn it in or something?
Then we turn it in, yeah.
Yeah.
Will you turn it in, so we reimburse that account?
Yes, we get rewards. I think we have a hundred dollars.
You got it. Okay. Proof. Vehicle, for proof of weight.
We're clean.
Okay.
I think we could build directly, then we turn it in, then our insurance would be very, very expensive. Well, then, when that, that mowing tractor, that John Deere that we had leased earlier this summer and that windshield broke.
They couldn't get it.
They, well, then they said that, I came in there and there was like four guys working on it. I'm like, take four guys to change a windshield? And they said, yeah, because the only other alternative is to pull the cab off of it. So they, apparently one of the John Deere guys told them, there's a way to do it, but you need a few guys and they could like...
Rash.
They knock it in there because otherwise you had to pull the cab to change the windshield on that tractor. And then everybody looked around, they're like, we didn't want to do that. So there was like four guys and they had the urethane on it and they were like...
That bus driver, they were mowing, like loading.
Yeah, somebody, well, didn't, I thought the one, didn't the one, the school bus? Drew it out, drove it back, but... So I was laughing, I'm like...
Because the bus driver told me, he said, damn, go ride it through, ride the bus to the windshield.
Cause they, I even cracked the joke, I'm like, how many guys does it take to change the windshield? Well, apparently it took about four or five because that was the only way to do it, so... You know, but that, I seen a deal the other day. There's certain vehicles, I don't remember which one it was, where to like change the headlight and you had to pull the fender out to like take it the way it was. You had to, I mean, what?
Summer pickup.
Yeah.
Up and hit, hit the top lens, just took out the plastic.
Yeah.
And the top lens, you gotta buy the whole thing.
Yeah.
For 28,000 bucks. Oh, shit.
It's insane. Well, that, um... My wife's Toyota Rav, the tail, is like this weird triangle shape and it's like this big. And it had like this little crack up top or whatever, where you had to replace this whole this, but you had to pull the rear fender and like loosen the door and then put this gigantic, like light it, I mean, it was ridicu... The way they make stuff is just why they... I mean, it sure looks pretty, but man, to fix that stuff is just... Well, that's why when you hit a deer now and it's like $9,000, you're like, how could that be? You're like, well, $5,000 in labor to tear it apart just to put the puzzle back together. I mean, it's all that stuff is plastic, right? Yeah, it's all junk too. It's all push clips and... Yeah.
Plastic shit with little plastic button.
Yeah.
It's crap. All shiny ones too. I walk. This is all the departments, Marles, we're back there, right?
Yeah. I'm just thinking of the days when we used to have to shut the lights off. Well, it was long ago, we used to be here till what, five, six? We used to take lunch break, whatever happened. Huh? Whatever happened because of changes. Well, the chairman doesn't let anybody talk. Well, the chairman doesn't let anybody talk. That's what I'm being told.
He talks too much, I think.
Talks just enough to shut everybody up, I guess.
No, we don't have a mirror in front of them, no.
You know, it's funny, cause my little girl is just getting to the age now where she just learns new words every day. You know, you just gotta watch everything he's saying.
Always.
And it's so funny, cause people come around and they're like, oh, that little girl, she just talks the whole time, where does she get that from? And I just gotta sit there and just, oh, yeah, I know exactly where she's.
Don't be a smart one.
Oh, I can't blame my wife at all, but I couldn't even try, I wouldn't even be such a liar. Yeah, she just walks around, Larry's just a chatterbox now.
She gets.
Yeah. It's pretty bad down there.
Yeah. I got a little bit of heat with that, David, we planted him over the Fourth of July. Lucky people, somebody didn't make him take a holiday. They paid your tuition. Well, we gave him a day and a half, a quarter day for that on the Fourth of July, this summer.
Someone's complaining about that?
Yeah.
So how many guys are out there in the shop total?
You got three guys.
So there'd be one, there'd be one in Braddock and there's two in Hazelton. And then there's two blade operators running out of the Linton shop. And I believe the Lee out of Strasburg, so that would be eight operators. And then John and Skylar, so ten full-time employees.
And Wickenhead.
And Wickenhead, yeah, okay, eleven. So there's, um. Eleven full-time employees and then.
There's three people at base then? You mean Gar?
There's two, no, Gar's in Brack. So Hazelton would be Justin and that, um, Mr. Schaefer there, I forgot his first name.
So it's your two blades up there?
Yeah.
Want to say start down?
Well, there's been two blades up there for quite a while, cause they took the spare up there. That spare blade was up there, that was actually last winter, I think they were keeping two blades, cause that's when Skylar was jumping into a blade or John and they were going up and helping Gar do the stuff there, so. So there's been two blades in that Hazelton shop for probably a year now.
I hope they stay and hopefully get some stuff done now.
Yeah, well, if we get the weather to cooperate too, you know, it's nice that they've been getting a lot of stuff done this winter, like. Like you said, the Culver deals and stuff trying to get a hat together, that's gonna be, that's gonna be huge for Inglebuck.
Well, yeah. So is that, how many, what did we have before? What's most blade operator we had?
Probably eight, cause if I remember right, like when I, when Alex served, I remember him saying that the county went down to seven blade operators before he became commissioner and.
Yeah, we won.
Should always had eight, is what he said, and so that's where, there was always seven. This is the first time, I think, we've had eight since I've been commissioner, so.
Okay.
Cause we always had seven and then it seemed like every time we got to eight, someone would retire or quit and we were back to seven and then we were down to five for a while.
And we got, what, nine blade? One extra. So one, just as back.
Should have nine blades, yeah. Yeah, which sounds about right. I know Alex said when he was road superintendent, they always had eight and then, right, I think when he left was when they, somebody had quit or retired and they didn't fill the spot.
They weren't gonna either.
Well, and he had always said that he felt like we were one short out any years and so.
But I mean, they were never gonna refill that spot anymore. I mean, I thought, wow, we did enough to sell.
And I want to say that was a fourth in Strasburg usually?
No, hey, hey, Gary, not that.
Okay. Well, that was the route, but they, they came out of Strab, right? There used to always be four.
Yeah.
And then, but see, now there was never always two out of Hazelton, so that's kind of a big difference now, but, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that, I didn't know there were two up there.
Well, and that's where I think, I think the big issue with that was because Gar had such a big area and then I think they shifted everybody down kind of to kind of skip Cody's area, like. The Linton guys went a little further south and then the Hazelton guys were going further south now and then one guy was, basically one guy kind of split Gar's route up and took some of that west of Linton area and kind of, they shifted, I think, twenty miles out of like four or five routes to try and even.
So what did they do down up my way? They all stayed the same?
No, I think Cody, they tried to take like twenty or thirty miles from Cody, so somebody's going further west or further south of Strasburg, I'm assuming with all that. I don't know exactly how it is, but that's kind of, cause Cody's was the biggest one, I think he had a hundred and seventy miles and they were trying to get him down to like one forty and I think they did, but. And I think that's cause they, some of the Strasburg guys went further down, some of the Linton guys worked further and then they, that Hazelton blade went further into the, like south of Tendrick then.
Still my chain.
That's the blade routes you're talking, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
These are different ones and have the.
Ran out of color to do the data. So each color's a different route?
Yeah, and he's still gonna modify it, I think.
Sure. Okay, well, yeah, there you go, guys, there's a, Josh has a, like a map, route map, that the road department has of.
Of the word blades, so?
Yeah, each color's a different route, I guess, but it sounds like it might be changing again or something, but that's kind of what it is right now. Ready? Well, if everybody's done looking at the bills, then yeah, entertain a motion to adjourn.